So if you could kind of work that to get that compliant, it would make all our lives a lot easier, I think. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Williams.
Any other questions for the council? Councilor Gomez.
Thank you, President. Mr. President. Mayor Sarno, how are you?
How's Dad feeling?
Um, mine's is just a small, a small, a small ask and a question. I know we, um, I'm definitely blessed to be coming into a certain time in the district when in Ward One, we have such a lot of economic development coming in. And the only, uh, we, I think we all got a letter. It's about that crossing from quadrangle to the library. And I know this is something that's happened before. A young girl in the past has been hit and killed. And now that we are, we have the beautiful Dr. Seuss museum, and we're marketing it as a place that we want people to go, and we have that parking lot across. Is there a chance, or can we move into a direction to make sure that crossing is a safe place for, for people that come to visit, and we don't get put in that same position that we were when, you know, I know it was dark out at that moment, but I know with the more, the more the people are coming, that crossing is going to be used. And if there, I don't know if it's a question for, for Chris, but that, that has come up in, in a conversation about making sure that's a safe place to cross.
No, it's a good, two things here, and I'll bring up Director Signoli, too. Again, you need Mast dot okay. You do have two lights, one at school, we walk, walking, pedestrian walk, and one at, at State, State and Chestnut. That is probably the same length away from, but people want to go the shortest distance there. The other thing, as I stated before, I know if you were here, Councilor Gomez, a pedestrian crosswalk, signage, even a trip light, if people, people at times will not, it gives you a false sense of security. Chris can, Director Signoli come up here, but you have cars going, they stoplight, and they're going full tilt. So maybe, I'll have Chris explain, maybe there's an opportunity for more education. I talked to him about putting signage up there, please utilize crosswalk here on it. It was unfortunate what occurred. There's responsibility to vehicular traffic, there's also responsibility to pedestrians. But you don't want to set somebody up for false safety, indicating, hey, I put my foot out on that crosswalk, and they're automatically gonna, gonna stop. So you gotta, positioning, Chris can explain. Classical condominiums right there, you go up a little, there's a stoplight right there. Then at State and Chestnut, there's a stoplight there. And I, if you look at walking across in the parking lot, to walking down the steps to go to where the pedestrian crosswalk is there, that you could walk, it's probably the same amount of yardage or footage, if not less. But I'll let Director Signoli explain what can or cannot. We did speak about signage.
Sure. Probably about a month and a half ago, so there was an entity, a national entity, that submitted an open letter to the city of Springfield that discussed this point specifically. Number one, when State Street was rebuilt, beginning in about 2007 and 2008, from a design perspective, Mast DOT basically, because their funds were being used, said to the city of Springfield, under no circumstances will you be allowed to have a crosswalk at that location. For those of us who are on the older side a little bit, there used to be a crosswalk there. The reason why it was taken out is because there was a number of accidents and a number of pedestrian accidents that occurred there. Number one, just from a simple rule standpoint, you cannot put a crosswalk in a location where there is a stop traffic queue, meaning traffic's backing up. We've had pedestrians getting hit on State Street, Sumner Avenue, and in both cases, somebody in the right lane stopped to let somebody go by, and as what happened at that location, somebody in the left lane was traveling. So when you have a vehicle stopped, and the, the person thinks it's okay to cross, it's not really okay to cross. What we have been looking into at certain places on State Street is where we can install crosswalks, where we can install them, A, legally, and B, safely. Just because something will end up being legal doesn't mean it's safe. We want to make sure that it's safe in that location. If we were to, the other request that came in, well, at that location, put up a pedestrian light, for lack of a better term, now you need to coordinate that light with a light that would be 150 feet, you know, down at Maple and Chestnut, and then you have one at Dwight, and you get into all sorts of pedestrian issues. So what we've been doing is I've been working with the mayor, and we've been talking about signage. One of the major issues, too, was pushing as many people as possible to the proper location for parking for the library, which is behind the library, which is not across the street. However, it's right there, so people still, still use it as well. Many people cross the street.
So, but, but there's a sign that says quadrangle parking.
Yeah, I know. It's, that's one of the things that disturbs me a little bit, is that, because it's the part, the parking lot is the one that does that.
Because you guys are talking about the distance, which, you know, it's noted that we have places where people can cross, but we also, is there something different with Tower Square, which between is, on those two lights, between Bridge and, uh, the next one at the corner, there's a, there's a crossing there.
Bridge and Harrison.
Yeah, there's, there's a crossing from the Tower Square opening, that it doesn't have lights or anything, but it tells people, and it's noted that pedestrians can cross there, and everybody, and, and the length is way more closer than, um...
The, the issue with that there is that you're dealing with two-lane roadway, number one, and you're dealing with speeds that are, I don't want to say nonexistent, but very, very low. Good visibility, so if somebody's driving, you know, they have good visibility of somebody crossing the street. Four-lane roadways, the information that I provided to a couple of different entities is jumping through hoops to put a pedestrian crossing on a four-lane road. Rule number one, don't do it. And number two, if you do it, making sure you're doing it as safely as possible. There is going to be one installed on Plainfield Street in the area of McDonald's, the backside of the McDonald's there, as part of the MGM work. That's going to have its own signal associated with it.
So it's going to be at the McDonald's, not at the Pride, where we...
It's at the Mc, the first one's going at the McDonald's, and that's being done as part of MGM's work. So what we're going to be doing with that is looking at that, seeing how that works, how it operates on that, because it is, you, you have the entrance and exit ramps to the highway there. You're far enough away from the intersection, so we want to see how that works. We're going to be looking at the location right at Pride as well. And the issue that I have with that is almost the same as State Street. When that backs up with traffic, you have people crossing the street there. So on all of those, we, we've been going through our analyses, trying to put up as much signage. The one in the north end is probably more of my primary, trying to, trying to get that taken care of, because it's one of those areas, people are going to use that.
Exactly.
And, you know, the last thing we want to do is, we went, well, we just don't want people to, to use it and not give them an option. So the intersection at Avocado West and Plainfield is being rebuilt, and it's going to have full pedestrian crossings there. Right now, you don't have that. You only have it on two of the sides, so you'll have it there. So that will help a little bit from people that are on that side of it. However, the people that are a little bit more on the river side of it, will be looking at that crossing also.
No, the reason why I ask is because we're encouraging in the district down in, and here in downtown metro, a walkability, you know, with the reconstruction of Derry Way, Stern Square, restaurants, you know, pension, you know, all of that stuff is interconnected one way or another. And on top of, you know, the walkability part, which I actually asked, meaning is, with all this reconstruction, are we going to be putting bike lanes, you know, specifically all the way up Main Street into some of these avenues that are, we're redoing? Because, you know, a lot of these folks don't have a place where to put their bicycle, specifically now that you, TJ said, we're going to be, we're going to be having 50 more bikes, cops on bikes. I want to, I want to make sure that within the district and all over the city, that these bikes have a place to go, they're not on the sidewalks, and they're not in the middle of the street. So I, I know we're doing a lot of work, and I asked you that before, that, you know, creating walkability also, bike, bicycle accessibility also.
Councilor Gomez, at the time you were not here, I also mentioned economic development. It might be a small thing, but it's big. Scott Hanson's really been on the forefront. We're, I funded the bike share program, so you're gonna, you're gonna have that in areas of the city and the downtown area. So you're gonna have the bike.
The bikes on, you know, that you can take off, okay.
Bay State Medical is working with Mercy, some other entities are also working with it.
And the North Main Street project that's kind of finishing up now, that's all going to have bike lanes on both sides of it, once they do all of that striping, which will probably happen in next week or 10 days or so. And all along Main Street, all along State Street, East Columbus, West Columbus Avenue, as part of all the casino work, is going to have all the bike lanes as well. So the downtown area will be, will have that all taken care of and moving into the north end. Most of the major streets, when we're going to be trying to do paving, we're trying to install bike lanes where we can, as long as we have the width and everything, we want to do it correctly. Any roadway that's being reconstructed through Mast DOT, it's a mandate, we have to have it. So Island Pond Roosevelt, Bay Berkshire, Berkshire Cottage, et cetera, roads like that, will all have bike lanes installed.
All right. I had another question when it came to the 50 bikes that TJ said that were, that were pre-ordered, and just piggyback on what Councilor Williams was asking, because in my neighborhood, we have the same. Are those bikes gonna, are just regular bikes or motorized?
Goodbye, Barry.
Because I know most of the, kind of the new toys come through Ward One first, so...
So we ordered some bikes, we've got some more, we're about to ready to order, and they're, they're police mountain bikes. We actually did also just order four more of the Enduro motorcycles.
Yeah, the two-wheel.
No, not, actually, not the scooters, these are like crossover bikes.
Oh, no, I've seen them when we're walking in the parade.
Yeah, because they're really good for urban environment, but then if you have to go off the trails and up into, you know, as you, you know, the city's got some conservation land in the woods. But the officers really do like the bicycle details, because they exercise in rides. We're getting some regular mountain bikes, police mountain bikes.
So the 50 bikes are just regular, okay, not motorized, but we do have those accessible because we had just acquired those, okay.
Three different versions, you have the regular motorcycle, police motorcycle, the Biagio, which is more intimate policing, and then you have the dirt, we have the dirt bikes, so.
Okay. Just wanted to verify, seeing if Mason Square was going to get any of those, those things, but we have them already. I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Ash.
Mr. President, I think we've been presented with a sound and stable budget. I think we all agree. I would make a motion that we move the question.
Motion to move the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Both.
The ayes have it?
[applause]
Mr. Clerk.
All those in favor of closing the hearing say aye. Opposed? The ayes have it? Mr. Clerk.
On approving item one of this, excuse me, on approving one on the agenda, the FY18 budget, Counselor Edwards, absent. Counselor Allen, absent. Counselor Rook.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Gomez.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Marcus Williams.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Ash. Yes, Counselor Twigs.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Shea.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fenton.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hurst.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Bud Williams.
[laughing]
Yes, Counselor Ramos.
Said for the last time, yes.
[laughing]
Yes.
I'll still see you at the games, buddy. Thank you very much. Thank you, Councilor. Thank you. Thank you. Henry gets here. Thank you to every one of you. I know we still have...
More than sufficient, order is approved. Item number two, Mr. Clerk.
Item number two is the FY18 budget for retained earnings. Counselor Edwards, absent. Counselor Allen, absent. Counselor Rook.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Gomez.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Marcus Williams.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Ash. Yes, Counselor Twigs. Yes, Counselor Shea.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fenton.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hurst.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Bud Williams.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Ramos.
Yes. More than sufficient, order is approved. Item number three, Mr. Clerk.
Item number three is the FY18 budget order for the enterprise funds. Counselor Edwards, absent. Counselor Allen, absent. Counselor Rook.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Gomez.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Marcus Williams.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Ash. Yes, Counselor Twigs. Yes, Counselor Shea.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fenton.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hurst.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Bud Williams.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Ramos.
Yes. More than sufficient, order is approved. Last item?
Item number four is the FY18 budget for the revolving funds. Counselor Edwards, absent. Counselor Rook, absent. Counsel, Counselor Allen, absent. Counselor Rook.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Gomez.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh. Yes, Counselor Marcus Williams.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Ash. Yes, Counselor Twigs. Yes, Counselor Shea.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fenton.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hurst.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Bud Williams. Yes, Counselor Ramos.
Yes. More than sufficient, order is approved. Is there any, any further business before this council?
No further business for this meeting.
All right. Thank you, everyone.
That's the first one there. Good job.
Evening, councilors. My name is Randolph Blake. I reside at 18 Larchmont Street in Springfield and work as a lieutenant in the Springfield Fire Department. I come to speak to you today as a private citizen about the, what the issue of residency has revealed, as well as one of the most important reasons the city council exists as a legislative branch for the citizens: justice. Justice in that all of us are given their just due, granted, and deserve the same protections, no matter what we look like. Unfortunately, an injustice was clearly manifested in the district chief contract discussion and decision on 6-5 in the form of white privilege and institutional racism. Discussions of race can be unfamiliar and disconcerting, but nonetheless needed. Understand when I say whiteness, it's not about genetics, DNA, or biology, just like blackness is not, but rather what you are perceived as by persons in positions of authority, and how society lends weight and significance to who and what you are. To understand the power dynamic in the Springfield Fire Department, consider all upper management, except District Chief Cologne, are white. The first African-American with the opportunity to break the ceiling is Captain Mark Savage, and he and others are being denied a legal opportunity for advancement. Captain Savage is a 38-year, highly decorated Muslim African-American member of the Springfield Fire Department. He is only one of three members in the last 40 years to receive our highest honor and most coveted medal, the Medal of Honor, where he saved a child without fire gear and protection. He has received numerous awards and citations that time won't allow to state. This is in addition to being an honored and respected member and resident of the city of Springfield. While the commissioner, deputy, and district chiefs do not run into burning buildings anymore, they are a vital part of this organization. They apply acquired leadership skills in all aspects of our organization, all to benefit the citizens and the community that they serve. They are supposed to embody values of honesty, integrity, and respect, and setting the tone and culture of our organization. Unfortunately, due to the commissioner, his deputy, and six of his district chiefs, all being a violation of the residency ordinance, it can be no surprise when members do not embody these values and embody sentiments such as what Chief Jamie Erickson stated in a personal post. They want to help all their buddies get a job who can't get a high enough score. It's like the welfare system. Let's give free handouts to people who don't want to put the work in. What a joke these guys are. Or when Lieutenant Ireland, another non-resident, states in one of his personal posts, here's why I think racism in America is good. Because people hate people that they don't know because of the color of their skin. Simple to the point and wonderful. Poet Scott Wood says, "Racism is a complex system of social and political levers and pulleys set up generations ago to continue working on the behalf of whites at other people's expense, whether whites know or like it or not." This definition is clearly seen in their discrepancy in how Deputy Cheetum, even after 35 years, and Deputy Anthony of the Police Department, legally complied with the residency requirement, no excuses. Excuses abound in the Fire Department when the city attorney, law department, two union attorneys, and HR Director Mahoney collude and protect those in noncompliance of the law. And when we see the mayor, other than not renewing the commissioner's contract, remains silent on the issue. But when there are Black and Brown people involved concerning possible illegality, he is fit to be tied, as he stated concerning those fearful immigrants provided sanctuary in South Congregational Church just recently, and how actions will be taken to control illegality. And when Rule 19, a rule that was not followed in the last council meeting, rules had to be followed in parliamentary procedure. All of these situations, rules, and laws have to be followed unless it is considering white district chiefs, a deputy, and a commissioner who are breaking the law. And then nothing is said, no actions are taken. This epitomizes white privilege. This has nothing to do with qualifications, test scores, or acts of bravery. This is a shameful attempt to circumvent the law and the declaratory judgment and order of Judge Sweeney. City resident captains Fancy, Savage, Denson, and Del Valley, myself included, Lieutenant Blake, Burgos, Kakiya, and Pollard are having our legal opportunities denied at our expense. This council should be ashamed of themselves if they choose to put the interests of six unlawful, uninvested, non-residents ahead of 150,000 dedicated citizens you serve, especially the youth we are supposed to educate and teach and give a fair opportunity to for a rewarding future in the city. Justice delayed is justice denied. There should be no waiting, no retirements, no circumventions, no excuses. So I'm asking the councilors to dig deeper and reflect and continue to learn and use all the resources that are available to you, including someone like Professor D'Angelo, who's in Westfield State College, about dismantling institutional racism wherever you find it. Find your courage to vote no for a contract or privilege, and thereby move those levers and pulleys towards this council's most rewarding purpose: justice for all. Thank you.
Counselor Hurst.
Chief, Chief Jamie Erickson posted, they want to help, on Facebook.
Okay.
Okay. They want to help all their buddies get a job who can't get a high enough score. It's like the welfare system. Let's give free handouts to people who don't want to put the work in. What a joke these guys are. Lieutenant Ireland stated, here's why I think racism in America is good. Because people hate people that they don't know because of the color of their skin. Simple to the point and wonderful. This was posted on a Facebook page, on a public social media. These are, these are personal posts. This was, I believe Jamie, Chief Erickson's was on a person, on a personal page, but it was available for the public to see. Michael Ireland's might be in another post that was quote, in a private room, but it's for all firefighters and people to see.
Do you have dates or times to those posts?
I, I can get you those.
Appreciate that.
Do you have a, do you have a screenshot of those posts?
Yes. I can give you all that information.
[inaudible]
What's that?
[inaudible]
Well, I will do that. Okay. Anything? What's that?
[inaudible]
I, I will.
Counselor Williams.
[inaudible] Someone posted something about Tower Square, on the post that was posted somewhere in the city, and they were able to report it, and that gentleman...
Well, these, these posts have been reported to our, to our administration.
Who, okay.
But again, that's a different issue, but I will let you know that all these posts have been, have been, have been on, you know, and more, I've been told to the administration.
Who are they reported to? When you say administration?
The commissioner.
So it goes to...
[inaudible]
Okay. That's okay, that's, that's all right. So if he...
[inaudible]
Right, but, excuse me, Commissioner. If he, if he, I'm not, I'm addressing you. If he hasn't, let's give him, so we can all see it.
Okay.
Put him in the, put him in the thread, then we'll make sure that we all have it.
I will do that.
Counselor Fenton.
Sir, what gave you the impression that the commissioner had received those posts?
Because we have given them in packets. I've written up people. We have put these posts and given him to a plethora of posts, of social media, of firefighters.
And you personally gave these...
Myself personally, and also Cap Savage and other individuals, yes.
You handed them to the commissioner. How did you get them to the commissioner?
Through our policy.
Thank you. Our final speaker of the night is Mr. Russell Seelig.
Good evening. My name is Russell Seelig. I live at 38 Oxford Street in Springfield. And some of you have heard this kind of thing before, but I'm here again to talk about some assessment practices by our Board of Assessors. It appears to me that there are dark forces at bay in this administration when it comes to the assessors department. The Law Department is now sanctioning withholding information about whether or not the assessors will enact penalties against those investment properties who do not return completed information requests, 38Ds. Penalties that the assessors are required by law to enact. The law is very specific. The law says owner will be assessed. Owner will be assessed. And that is also included in the information that the assessors send out to all the investment property owners. The assessors are in violation of the state law by not enacting the penalties. Yet the Law Department, which should be counseling the assessors to adhere to the state law, is now sanctioning waiting until November, presumably until after the elections, to indicate whether or not it will enact those penalties, costing the city an estimated quarter of a million dollars in revenue for fiscal year 18, which begins the 1st of July in a couple of weeks. Enough to fill a number of potholes on city streets. So what dark forces are at bay here? Enactment of the penalties would have two obvious benefits. One is it would encourage the owners to provide the information that is requested, and the other is the added income to the city. It would also provide property tax equity for all the other property owners in the city who do, who do provide information and who do pay their fair share of taxes. Dark forces appear to influence another aspect of assessment practices. Four years ago, the Department of Revenue's local advisor provided guidance to the city, to the assessors, on how to properly value billboards and cell towers in the city. The assessors chose to ignore that guidance, which would have complied with certification standards. And the assessors went off on a tangent that appears to have cost the city $1,200,000 in revenue each of the next four years, as recently seen by a Superior Court judge. A tangent that has cost the city about $5 million over the intervening four years. So what are the dark forces operating behind the scenes in City Hall? You probably all have seen some of them. How can the Law Department sanction the assessors violating the state law? How high up in this administration do those dark forces reach? In the case of information requests, it's a quarter of a million dollar question. In the case of the assessors off on a tangent, not knowing how to value billboards and cell towers, misvaluing investment properties, it is now a $5 million question. But my question is, when will it stop? So thank you for your attention. Look forward to some action at some point.
Thank you. All right. The time is now 7:04. We'll get started with our regular meeting. Council and their guests, please take their seats. Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Here. Counselor Allen, absent. Counselor Rook.
Yes.
Here. Counselor Gomez.
Present.
Present. Counselor Walsh.
Present.
Present. Counselor Marcus Williams.
Present.
Present. Counselor Ash. Here. Counselor Twigs.
Present.
Present. Counselor Shea.
Present.
Present. Counselor Fenton.
Present.
Present. Counselor Hurst.
Present.
Present. Counselor Bud Williams.
Here.
Here. Counselor Ramos.
Present. Please stand with me to observe a moment of silence.
Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic of America.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any reports of committee? Counsel Fenton.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise to make a report of the Finance Committee. Finance Committee Chairperson Allen was unable to attend this afternoon due to a dear friend of his who passed away in the country of Ireland, so he will be out of the United States and not able to join us this evening. We did deliberate on 21 different financial orders that are on tonight's agenda. Each one was approved. I was joined at that meeting by Counselors Hurst, Counsel President Ramos, and also by Counselor Twigs from Board Four.
Counsel, do you have a... Did Chairman Allen provide you with a synopsis of our, or a report of last week's Finance Committee meeting?
He did not, and I was not able to attend.
Okay. All right. When he does get back, I'm going to ask him to report on that meeting. There were several budget-related issues that were discussed at that meeting. It was a very productive meeting, and a lot of progress was made, and so I look forward to the chairman reporting on that. Are there any other reports? Oh, all those in favor of accepting the report say aye. Opposed? The ayes have it? Counsel Hurst.
Thank you. The general government meeting met today at 3:00. Along, I was joined by yourself, along with Counselor Fenton, who came in on the tail end of it. We had a discussion around what Russ Seelig just presented to us, around the 38D forms and the non-compliance for those who own three units or more, along with commercial and industrial units, and so we're going to continue to work through that issue and see if we can deal with the folks who are not in compliance. And so I've been in conversation with Richie Allen, and hopefully I'll have another report for you or an update in the next couple of months or so. We also talked about the legal parking, or the parking ban during winter storms and the fines that are associated with those. I think Counselor Fenton had mentioned that the fines were too small, and so we discussed a variety of different ways in which we could adjust those. We didn't arrive at any conclusions yet, and we're going to hold some future meetings on that particular issue, which I will be bringing back before the council for a full update. And then finally, we talked about the early voting and the amount of money that it would take to conduct early voting outside of the state elections. We're going to continue to work with Gladys to see how we can make that happen. It seems like right now we'll either piggyback off of what Worcester is doing currently or we'll work with Counselor Williams at the state level to see if we could get it approved from the legislature.
All those in favor of accepting the report say aye. Opposed? The ayes have it? Are there any other reports of committee? Seeing none, item number one, Mr. Clerk.
Item number one is a report from the Comptroller regarding the May revenues versus expenditures.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight you have the May revenue and expenditure report. It represents 11 months of the fiscal year or 92%.
Any questions from the council? All those in favor of accepting the report say aye. Opposed? The ayes have it? Items 2 through 14, Mr. Clerk.
Items 2 through 14 are petitions, are reports and recommendations from the BPW regarding petitions from Light Tower, Eversource, Comcast, Comcast, and Columbia Gas. The petitions are for the installation of fiber optic conduit throughout various locations in the city, the installation of an electronic duct, the installation of underground gas mains on the Pine Point and Boston Road area. The recommendation is to approve all items.
Any questions from the council? Seeing none, there are conditions attached to these petitions, and so all those in favor of accepting the petitions with conditions say aye. Opposed? Sir?
I'm sorry. I'm Hector Beller from Department of Public Work. I'm representing the Board of Public Work. There is a condition to approve the Light Tower, Parker Street, and Boston Row. There's a new paving right there. There's less than two years. The condition of the Board of Public Work to approve that petition is Light Tower have to pave the whole intersection, line painting, and replace the loops for the traffic lights. It's not just the trench.
Okay. That's part of the conditions for approval.
Yeah. In the public hearing, that's the condition of the approval.
That's listed as a condition?
I don't know. I don't know.
I believe it is.
Which item? Which street?
Parker Street, Boston Row.
Yeah, it's number 10.
That's one of the conditions of the...
It's already listed as a condition? Okay.
Okay.
All right. Is that good?
Yeah, thank you.
All those in favor of accepting with conditions say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it? Item number 15.
Item number 15 is a grant, a CDBG grant in the amount of $3,490,000 sponsored by the mayor.
Hi, Kathy Bono, and I work for the Office of Community Development. The actual financial, the grant award on the council agenda was for $3,490,000. After this went to print, we actually received our actual awards from HUD, so, which was a good thing because we usually get them at the beginning of May. So the actual award right now to the City of Springfield is $3,440,019 for Community Development block grant.
Counsel Williams.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is the question I did not have an opportunity to ask during the mayor's presentation of his budget, but just a question to you if I can. Is there any money allocated specifically for rehabilitation incentives rather than demolition?
We don't have any money in the budget for demolition right now. We are paying off a demolition bond, but there are no funds in this budget for demolition. We don't have any money in this year's budget for historic rehab only because we have a carryover project that we have allocated $250,000 for the row houses on Maple Street, and unfortunately, they've had some delays, but that is going forward, so that money is going to be spent in the next fiscal year, so that we have a cap we have to live with. So the mayor has every intention to fund it next year as long as we receive the allocation.
And let me just ask, is demo bond repayment typically a part of the CDBG budget?
It has been for, it is an eligible expense, and it has been. We paid off a demolition, a $5 million demolition bond, and I think, and this is off the top of my head, I think we have another eight years to pay.
Yes, all right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Counsel Walsh.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to ask you about this year's allocation. Is it more, less?
It went down 50, about $50,000.
Okay.
Which is typical. All the entitlements have gone down.
Okay, and there was no difficulty applying for it this year and...
You don't apply. It's a formula once they pass the appropriation. So it's the federal government right now.
There was a fear that there might be some, they may be in jeopardy, but everything went well?
We'll see in October. There is a lot of talk.
Okay.
But this is secure right now. We have no idea what's going to happen in October. I don't think anyone does.
The October surprise.
Yes.
Counsel Gomez.
Just a question from the letter that I sent you a month ago. When it comes to, you know, how 30, a certain percentage is used for administration right off the top, and a piece of, a part of how you distribute, because I did recognize how we're paying back on the bond. In that same statement where it said it was a payback for the bond, it had another stipulation in the same line stating it was for kind of administrative fees. Are those administrative fees on that payback part of the administrative fees that are allocated from the percentage you have to take off the top of the bond? Or is that a separate fee?
There's two numbers that are in that demolition line item. It's the bond payment, and there's also what we call program delivery. We also have...
That's the one.
Yeah, we also have a staff person who helps with the disposition of properties, and he will go and, before tax title, or if people want to see properties that the city owns, that he will let them into the properties, and it assists the city in disposing of properties. So it's actually can be considered a program delivery cost under disposition.
So it's another cost on top of the cost that we take off for administrative. All right, thank you.
Are there any other questions from the council? Seeing none, I will accept the motion to amend the number that is reflected in our agenda.
So moved.
To the actual number. Motion made by Counsel Fenton, seconded by Counsel Gomez. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it? All those in favor of accepting the grant as amended say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it? Thank you.
Item number 16 is a home entitlement grant in the amount of $1,090,000.
That's me again. And this also actually went up surprisingly by about $21,000. The actual award from HUD was $1,121,435. Good. It's an entitlement we receive every year. We pay first-time homebuyer costs. We do multi-family production, big rental rehab programs, and we have a tenant-based rental assistance program.
Any questions from the council? Seeing none, all those in favor of accepting the grant say aye.
Aye.
Right, so the number that is reflected in our agenda is different than the actual...
Right, the actual, the amount in your agenda was, again, an estimate.
Okay.
And we see, just as CDBG, we receive all four of these awards together.
And what was the actual...
So the actual amount was $1,121,435.
All right, I'll accept the motion to amend.
Oh, sorry.
Motion made by Counsel Ash, seconded by Counsel Shay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it?
Item number 17 is a mass-in-motion grant, is a mass-in-motion grant increasing the amount of $620,000.
Good afternoon, councilors. Helen Carlton Harris, Commissioner, Division of Health and Human Services, City of Springfield, 47 Overlook Drive, Springfield, Massachusetts. The Mass-In-Motion Grant is our health and wellness grant. It has our partnership with the Springfield Public Schools, Gendara Mental Health and Caring Health Center. The goal of the grant is to assure that we are doing prevention, intervention, and education with young people around health and wellness in schools and in our community-based organizations.
Any questions from the council? Counsel Williams.
Could you just expand on some of the opiate programs that the city is maintaining, and if there's any more money coming in from the state, if you know of?
Sure. The Department of Health and Human Services in the City of Springfield has three grants that are specific to substance use disorders. One is for opioids and opioid overdoses, and to assure that, again, we're doing education, and we fund the Springfield Coalition for opioid overdose prevention. The other has to do with marijuana, again, substance use disorders, working in the schools with young people to assure that they understand the dangers of gateway drugs. Even though we're going to go through a process of legalizing marijuana in some form, we still want young people to understand the dangers of substance use disorders, and the other one grant has to do with alcohol and making sure that we are, again, getting that message out that these can be gateway drugs and can lead to other types of abuse.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Counsel Marcus Williams.
Thank you, Mr. President. Commissioner, just a quick question. Do you anticipate that we'll be asking for additional funding with the state, you know, referendums that just passed?
So the question becomes from the State Department of Public Health, what is the role of public health in terms of the marijuana legalization? And that role will dictate if we will need additional funding in order to make sure that we are keeping this city educated and our young people particularly safe from opioid and marijuana use disorders.
Are there any other questions from the council? Do we have the correct amount on this one? All those in favor of accepting the grant say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it?
Thank you.
Item number 18 is a HOPWA grant in the amount of $453,000. This is another grant that has had its amount changed since the publication of the agenda.
Me again. The HOPWA grant is actually housing opportunity for persons with AIDS. This grant actually went up $63,000. The amount we are awarded was $516,772, and that is based on AIDS cases, and it's in a format that's based on AIDS cases in the region.
Are there any questions from the council? I will accept the motion to amend. Motion made by Counsel Ash, seconded by Counsel Gomez. All those in favor of the amendment say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it? All those in favor of accepting the grant as amended say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it?
Item number 19 is the ESG grant in the amount of $319,000. This is the last grant that has had its amount changed since the publication of the agenda.
The ESG grant is the Emergency Solutions Grant, and this grant actually went down $5,000. The amount we are awarded from HUD was $314,406.
Any questions from the council? Is there a motion to amend?
So moved.
Motion made by Counsel Williams, seconded by Counsel Walsh. All those in favor of the amendment say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it? All those in favor of accepting the grant as amended say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it?
Item 20 is the FY16 Assistance to Firefighters Grant in the amount of $74,550.
Good evening, councilors. This is a $74,000 grant. The federal government's giving us $67,000. The fire department's paying $6,700 as a match. This is to replace all of our five-inch supply hose with four-inch hose to make it lighter, more safer for all of our firefighters and to protect all of our citizens in Springfield equally. It's going to be a much better tool to cut down on injuries to our firefighters, and I'd ask you to accept this grant.
Are there any questions from the council? Seeing none. All in favor of accepting the grant say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it? Thank you. Items 21 through 27, Mr. Clerk.
Item 21 is the Vulnerability and Preparedness Grant in the amount of $26,000. Item 22 is the FY17 Shine Grant in the amount of increase, in the amount of $19,996. Item 23 is the Health and Human Services Donation in the amount of $3,866.60. Item number 24 is misplaced on the agenda. It should be under orders. Item 25 is the Elder Donation in the amount of $382. Item 26 is the TJO Donation in the amount of $376. Item 27 is a fire donation in the amount of $100.
All right, all those in favor of accepting items 21, 22, 23, 25, 26, and 27, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it? Item number 24, Mr. Clerk.
Item number 24 is an order to pay a bill of a prior year for the Elder Affairs Department in the amount of $912.37.
Thank you, Mr. President of the council. This is asking the city council to allow us to pay a bill from 2013 for athletic equipment in our Elder Affairs Program.
That's a long time to have a bill.
Any questions from the council?
That's a long time to have a bill up.
Yeah, that just came in.
This is a financial order, and so all those in favor of suspension of Rule 19 say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it? Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
On paying the bill, Counsel Edwards. Yes. Counsel Allen, absent. Counsel Rook. Yes. Counsel Gomez. Yes. Counsel Walsh.
Yes.
Yes, Council Marcus Williams.
Yes.
Yes, Council Ash.
Yes.
Yes, Council Twigs. Council Twigs.
Yes.
Yes, Council Shay.
Yes.
Yes, Council Fenton.
Yes.
Yes, Council Hurst.
Yes.
Yes, Council Bud Williams.
Yes.
Yes, Council Ramos.
Yes. More than sufficient, order is approved. Item number 28, Mr. Clerk.
Item number 28 is the Second Step for the Ratification of the Collective Bargaining Agreement for the Springfield Firefighter Chiefs Association.
Council Walsh.
Yes, Mr. President. In the continuing saga of this particular issue, I'd like to make a move to refer this item to committee.
Motion made by Council Walsh, seconded by Council Rook. Council Fenton, on the motion.
I will support that move, Mr. President. I'd just point out to everybody at the request of Council Allen, who's out of the country attending the burial services for a friend of his, that he would like to be here this evening. And I understand this is a hotly contested issue, was decided by a simple majority at the last meeting, and without Council Allen's attendance, we won't be able to have that same majority this time around. So I will support that motion to committee.
So motion on the floor to send the item to committee. All those in favor of sending it to committee, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Mr. Clerk, how many votes do we need?
There are, you need seven members to send it to committee. On sending the item to committee, Council Edwards.
No.
No. Council Allen, absent. Council Rook.
Yes.
Yes, Council Gomez.
No.
No, Council Walsh.
Yes.
Yes, Council Marcus Williams.
No.
No, Council Ash. Yes, Council Twigs. Yes, Council Shay. Yes, Council Fenton.
Yes.
Yes, Council Hurst.
No.
No, Council Bud Williams.
No.
No, Council Ramos.
No. Motion fails. Is there any discussion on item number 28? Is the motion to move the question by Council Hurst, seconded by Council Gomez? On the motion?
No.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what the motion was.
All those in favor of moving the question, say aye.
No.
No.
Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
On moving the question, Council Edwards.
Yes.
Yes, Council Allen. Absent, Council Rook.
No.
No. No, Council Gomez.
Yes.
Yes, Council Walsh.
No.
No, Council Marcus Williams.
Yes.
Yes, Council Ash. No, Council Twigs.
No.
No, Council Shay.
No.
No, Council Fenton.
No.
No, Council Hurst.
Yes.
Yes, Council Bud Williams.
Yes.
Yes, Council Ramos.
Yes. Not sufficient, motion fails. Anyone?
I don't have anything to add.
Any questions, comments from the council? All right, on ratifying the agreement, Mr. Clerk? This is second step, and so there is no need to suspend Rule 19. Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
On ratifying the contract, Council Edwards.
No.
No, Council Allen, absent. Council Rook.
Yes.
Yes, Council Gomez.
No.
No, Council Walsh.
Yes.
Yes, Council Marcus Williams.
No.
No, Council Ash.
Yes.
Yes, Council Twigs. Yes, Council Shay.
Yes.
Yes, Council Fenton.
Yes.
Yes, Council Hurst.
No.
No, Council Bud Williams.
No.
No, Council Ramos.
No. Not sufficient. Agreement, financial order fails. Item number 29, Mr. Clerk.
Item number 29 is an order approving a lease for space at 70 Tapley Street for the Springfield Retirement Board.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is the lease of space by the Springfield Retirement System from the City of Springfield. They make a monthly payment, and the total payment for the year is $22,278.96.
Any questions from the council? All in favor of suspension of Rule 19, say aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Roll call.
On approving the lease, Council Edwards. Yes. Council Allen, absent. Council Rook.
Yes.
Yes, Council Gomez.
Yes.
Yes, Council Walsh.
Yes.
Yes, Council Marcus Williams.
Yes.
Yes, Council Ash. Yes, Council Twigs. Yes, Council Shay.
Yes.
Yes, Council Fenton.
Yes.
Yes, Council Hurst.
Yes.
Yes, Council Bud Williams. Absent, Council Ramos.
Yes. More than sufficient, order is approved.
Item number 30 is an order declaring surplus property at North Side Worthington Street.
Good evening, councilors. Brian Connors, 274 Springfield Street, Springfield. The order before you is declaring surplus on a small piece of property, about 2,500 square feet, at the end of Worthington Street on the corner of East Columbus. The city has not been using the property. We want to make the property available for development. In order to do so, we need it to be declared surplus first.
Any questions from the council? Mr. Clerk, does Rule 19 apply to this item? All those in favor of suspension of Rule 19, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Roll call.
On declaring this property a surplus property of the city, Council Edwards.
Yes.
Yes, Council Allen, absent. Council Rook.
Yes.
Yes, Council Gomez.
Yes.
Yes, Council Walsh.
Yes.
Yes, Council Marcus Williams.
Yes.
Yes, Council Ash. Yes, Council Twigs. Yes, Council Shay.
Yes.
Yes, Council Fenton.
Yes.
Yes, Council Hurst.
Yes.
Yes, Council Bud Williams, absent. Council Ramos. Yes, Council Bud Williams. Council Ramos.
Yes. More than sufficient, order is approved. Item number 31, Mr. Clerk.
Item number 31 is a Transfer of FY16 Free Cash to the Pension Stabilization Fund in the amount of $1 million.
Good evening, Mr. President. This is what, the second year in a row, we're able to do $1 million into a pension reserve, working closely with the city council, and certainly Councilor Tim Allen. We're happy to put this order before you to add another million to the pension reserve fund.
Any questions from the council? Seeing none. Just wanted to just go on record and thank Councilor Tim Allen for his work on this very important issue. All those in favor of suspension of Rule 19, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Roll call.
On approving the transfer, Council Edwards.
Yes.
Yes, Council Allen, absent. Council Rook.
Yes.
Yes, Council Gomez.
Yes.
Yes, Council Walsh.
Yes.
Yes, Council Marcus Williams.
Yes.
Yes, Council Ash. Yes, Council Twigs. Yes, Council Shay.
Yes.
Yes, Council Fenton.
Yes.
Yes, Council Hurst.
Yes.
Yes, Council Bud Williams. Council Bud Williams.
Yes.
Yes, Council Ramos.
Yes. More than sufficient, order is approved.
Item number 32 is the, is a transfer to install streetlights across departments in the amount of $220,000.
Thank you, Mr. President. The $220,000 transfer we're looking for, just to kind of put it in perspective, we made an estimate for FY17 for the amount of cost to run our streetlights in the middle of trying to go up for a new vendor, a new supplier for electricity. And the projections for the year-end, there's a $300,000 deficit in the account. We're asking for a transfer of $220,000, and then there'll be a second transfer from within the DPW to cover that deficit.
Any questions from the council? All in favor of suspension of Rule 19, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
On approving the transfer, Council Edwards.
Yes.
Yes, Council Allen, absent. Council Rook.
Yes.
Yes, Council Gomez. Absent, Council Walsh.
Yes.
Yes, Council Marcus Williams.
Yes.
Yes, Council Ash. Yes, Council Twigs. Yes, Council Shay.
Yes.
Yes, Council Fenton.
Yes.
Yes, Council Hurst.
Yes.
Yes, Council Bud Williams, absent. Council Yes, Council Bud Williams, Council Ramos.
Yes. More than sufficient, order is approved.
Item 33 is an order for a budget transfer across departments in the amount of $82,500.
This is the second part of that order, Mr. President. This is $80,000 for streetlights within the DPW, and $2,500 for postage expenditures in the Housing Code Department.
Any questions from the council? All in favor of suspending Rule 19, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
On approving the transfer, Council Edwards.
Yes.
Yes, Council Allen, absent. Council Rook.
Yes.
Yes, Council Gomez. Absent, Council Walsh.
Yes.
Yes, Council Marcus Williams.
Yes.
Yes, Council Ash. Yes, Council Twigs. Yes, Council Shay.
Yes.
Yes, Council Fenton. Yes, Council Hurst.
Yes.
Yes, Council Bud Williams.
Yes.
Yes, Council Ramos.
Yes. More than sufficient, order is approved.
Item number 34 is a budget transfer within the Finance Department in the amount of $1,377,445.47.
Thank you, Mr. President. This transfer is a transfer from the city's Pago capital account for current projects that have been funded and ongoing, and unexpended funds to set up for FY18, to have the full appropriation for Pago in FY18.
Any questions from the council? All in favor of suspending Rule 19, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Next item.
On the transfer, Council Edwards.
Yes.
Yes, Council Allen, absent. Council Rook.
Yes.
Yes, Council Gomez.
Yes.
Yes, Council Walsh.
Yes.
Yes, Council Marcus Williams.
Yes.
Yes, Council Ash. Yes, Council Twigs.
Yes.
Yes, Council Shay.
Yes.
Yes, Council Fenton.
Yes.
Yes, Council Hurst. Yes, Council Bud Williams. Yes, Council Ramos.
Yes. More than sufficient, order is approved.
Item number 35 is a budget transfer between departments in the amount of $172,000.
Thank you, Mr. President. This transfer is to cover the costs associated with the retirement system. Right now, we had a number of grants that we offset the cost for retirement to those grants. They did not come in as high as anticipated, so we need to transfer money in to make the appropriation whole.
Any questions from the council? All in favor of suspending Rule 19, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
On approving the transfer, Council Edwards.
Yes.
Yes, Council Allen, absent. Council Rook.
Yes.
Yes, Council Gomez.
Yes.
Yes, Council Walsh.
Yes.
Yes, Council Marcus Williams.
Yes.
Yes, Council Ash. Yes, Council Twigs. Yes, Council Shay.
Yes.
Yes, Council Fenton.
Yes.
Yes, Council Hurst.
Yes.
Yes, Council Bud Williams. Yes, Council Ramos.
Yes. More than sufficient, order is approved.
Item number 36 is a transfer from FY16 Free Cash to the Stabilization Reserve Fund in the amount of $2,415,494.47.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a transfer of the remaining $2.4 million into our main stabilization rainy day fund. It'll bring the balance up to $44.1 million, 7% of general fund, so we're heading in the right direction.
Any questions? Seeing none. All those in favor of suspending Rule 19, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
On approving the transfer, Council Edwards.
Yes.
Yes, Council Allen, absent. Council Rook.
Yes.
Yes, Council Gomez.
Yes.
Yes, Council Walsh.
Yes.
Yes, Council Marcus Williams.
Yes.
Yes, Council Ash. Yes, Council Twigs. Yes, Council Shay.
Yes.
Yes, Council Fenton.
Yes.
Yes, Council Hurst.
Yes.
Yes, Council Bud Williams.
Yes.
Yes, Council Ramos.
Yes. More than sufficient, order is approved. Item number 37, Mr. Clerk.
Item number 37 is on for Second Step. It is the Taxi and Livery Ordinance.
Good evening, councilors. I'm Tashina Davis from the Law Department. As I said before, I'm also a taxi and livery commissioner. And going through the months that I've been on the Taxi and Livery Commission, we've seen that people are often denied for late payment of fees rather than for their driving record or their criminal record, and we'd like to amend that so that we have more discretion. And also, we would like to incorporate the new state TNC legislation to just include the definition, so people that are aware that there are state regulations.
Any questions from the council? This is first. All right, so this is, we'll be taking Second and Third Steps tonight. We can take both steps at the same time by invoking Rule 22(c). We can, thank you, take both steps at the same time by invoking Rule 22(c). All those in favor of invoking Rule 22(c), say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it? We'll call Mr. Clerk.
On ordaining the ordinance, Council Edwards.
Yes.
Yes, Council Allen. Absent, Council Rook.
Yes.
Yes, Council Gomez.
Yes.
Yes, Council Walsh.
Yes.
Yes, Council Marcus Williams.
Yes.
Yes, Council Ash.
Yes.
Yes, Council Twigs. Yes, Council Shay.
Yes.
Yes, Council Fenton.
Yes.
Yes, Council Hurst.
Yes.
Yes, Council Bud Williams.
Yes.
Yes, Council Ramos.
Yes. More than sufficient, ordinance is approved. Next item.
Item number 38 is an order amending Chapter 327 of the city's ordinances titled Solid Waste. This is sponsored by the mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. This ordinance is to actually line up the regulations for our trash services along with the ordinance. There were some discrepancies, so we cleaned up the language, and we're just asking that it just be sent to committees, have a full hearing on it, with a director sign only can be present to help go through all the changes that we're making.
Most are made by Council Edwards to send the matter to committees, seconded by Council Gomez. All those in favor, say aye. This will go to the Maintenance and Development?
Yes.
Committee chaired by Council Walsh. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it?
Item number 39 is a resolution titled High Speed Rail, sponsored by Council Walsh.
Sponsored by myself and Council Shay, and this is actually pretty timely because I believe there was actually a rally for high-speed rail this afternoon at Union Station, but this is about to be reviewed in the budget process at the state, and I feel very strongly that this is something that would really help out the city of Springfield if this could ever happen. So I think it's important to add our voices to it so that it will be passed unanimously in the Senate and will influence the people who make the decision. I'd like to read the resolve. Whereas a stronger economic climate is essential to improving life in Springfield, and whereas for our economy to grow, we need to enhance connectivity between eastern and western Mass and attract growth in the region, and whereas the Massachusetts Legislature has an obligation to ensure that growth and opportunity are spread to all corners of the Commonwealth, therefore eliminating racial inequality, and whereas an increased focus on the development of downtown Springfield is expected to add thousands of new visitors annually, and whereas rail service provides a safe, reliable connection option to connect Massachusetts, one that comes at a critical point for transportation development in Springfield with an $83 million knowledge corridor and other rail bringing a steady stream of passengers into the area, and whereas the fastest existing link is the Lake Shore Limited, which I take once or twice a year, which runs once a day in 135 minutes, and whereas improving the existing rail connection between Springfield and Boston will help us connect people, ideas, and jobs, and will transform our entire region. Whereas Senator Lesser has filed legislation that has bipartisan support connecting eastern and western Massachusetts through rail service, and whereas Senate Bill 1935 would call on the Massachusetts Department of Transportation to conduct a feasibility study on passenger rail access between Springfield and Boston, including examination of cost, ridership, rights-of-way issues, and the resulting economic, social, and cultural benefits. Whereas this bill received a favorable report from the Joint Legislative Committee on Transportation in the 2015-2016 session, and whereas this bill passed as an amendment to the Senate budget in fiscal years 2016, 2017, and 2018 with unanimous support, and whereas Senate Bill 1935 has received the support of the Springfield Regional Chamber of Commerce, the Economic Development Council of Western Massachusetts, the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, the Boston Chamber of Commerce, and the Regional Employment Board of Western Massachusetts. Now, therefore be resolved that the Springfield City Council goes on record to support Senate Bill 1935, an act to study the feasibility of high-speed rail between Springfield and Boston, and be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be transmitted to Governor Charles Baker and Secretary of Transportation Stephanie Pollock. Thank you, and I hope it receives unanimous support.
Council Shay.
Yeah, I'd like to first off join in this resolution, but I think that, well, this is just a resolution. We need to look at the big picture. Western Massachusetts, we talk about Springfield, but it really impacts western Massachusetts. And to show you a little bit of the dynamics, out in eastern Massachusetts, I can't remember the name of the community, but they recently, without the drop of a hat, approved $1 billion of state and federal money to improve communication between some communities that already have effective rail service in place, but they're going to extend it a few more miles and add some stations. Here is western Massachusetts, entire half of the state, and to get effecto, I like to use effective rail service rather than high speed, so you don't think we're trying to put 200 mile an hour train in. It would cost us about, the state, about $450 million. We can't get a dime compared to $1 billion that they spend down the other end of the state unless we make an effort in this part of, not only Springfield, but this part of the state, to let them know the importance of this. Take a look at Connecticut. Connecticut has effective rail service from New Haven to New York City, and every community along that line has got prosperous development, jobs, improved housing market. If we had effective rail service in western Massachusetts, the job market here would open up. People here could go down and get jobs effectively. The housing market, we'd become almost a suburb of Boston. The housing market here would expand and be tremendously improved, and it would enhance the city. And another item to show you the arrogance of the eastern part of the state, the Boston Herald recently wrote an editorial saying that effective rail service for western Massachusetts would be a luxury, and they're able to spend a billion dollars to enhance service in an area that already has good rail service so that their people can get jobs and have housing. So, you know, it's important that we pass this resolution. We aren't spending the money, but we need to deliver the message that this is more than just a luxury. It's more than just wanting to take a train ride from Springfield to Boston. We're talking about the enhancement of jobs. Everybody in here running for office, we talk about jobs. We talk about the housing market, and this is something that would enhance that. So I would ask everyone to support this.
Council Marcus Williams, then Council Gomez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I certainly think this is, I know this is something that's been discussed thoroughly over the last couple of years, and I certainly stand in support of this resolution, and I want to thank my colleague, Council Walsh, for bringing this to the forefront because I certainly could have benefited from this as a student at Boston College coming back to Springfield. I know that. But I will say that I think Council Shay also wrote, made a good point that I iterated the first time this came before the council, and that was, is, I think the definition behind high speed can sometimes, it can be a little bit misleading, and I believe that there is a sound definition of what that actual mile per hour is to make it or denote it as high speed. So I think if we could get some more clarification on how fast this actually, this train actually is, or this trail, then I think that we'd be in better shape, because I just, I'd hate for people to look for something that can get them to Boston in, what, 45 minutes? It actually takes an hour and 20. So I just want to be on the record for reiterating that as I did the first time this came before the council. Thank you.
No, it was just, it was just that, you know, in Ward 1, there's a lot of great things going on, and I think aside from the MGM, I think the biggest plus that's going on is Union Station. I'm in full support of this resolution, and also, if you guys don't mind, I would love to be put on as a co-sponsor.
Absolutely.
Thank you for the work that you guys have been doing on it.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Seeing none. All those in favor of accepting the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it?
Item number 40 is a resolution authorizing a HUD 108 loan application for Paramount Theater, for Paramount Theater and Massasoit Hotel. This resolution is sponsored by the mayor.
Brian Connors, 274 Springfield Street in Springfield. The order before you is to authorize an application to HUD in the amount of $3.65 million under the Section 108 loan program for the Paramount Theater Massasoit Hotel project. With me tonight is Mr. Flores, Mr. Perez, and Mr. Dowd from New England Farm Workers Council, who would be the borrower. As you, I think most of you folks know, the Section 108 loan program is an economic development lending program available to us through HUD, guaranteed by our CDBG program. We use it for job-creating economic development projects. The most recent one we did that we lent out was to the La Quinta Hotel about five years ago, which has turned out very well. So we've got the ability to lend out five times our annual CDBG allocation. Right now, we're about halfway through that amount. They're in different forms of repayment, and that's within your packet. Also within your packet is the actual application that would go into HUD, as well as some of the renderings. The team from New England Farm Workers has handed out a project summary that indicates a $41 million total project, which includes the rehabilitation of the theater as an event space and a catering space, and the building of a new building for about 75 to 85 hotel rooms, boutique hotel rooms, and quite related to your last subject of development around Union Station and jobs, this would provide both. The team is here, and I'm here as well to answer any questions you have on the order.
Council Gomez.
So we, well, it's easy to see that, you know, the last part of the agenda, that this fits in quite perfectly with what we're talking about when it comes to bringing jobs and revitalization to the district, and just, this same grant, oh, let me backtrack. This same fund is the same fund we use for the downtown district for the restaurants.
Yes.
And from what I understand before, Boston has used the same fund to do hotels.
Yep, they created a hotel fund.
And how well in Boston did this, is this doing?
I actually think they created a hotel fund. I think they only did one or two loans out of it years ago, but we've, in Springfield, have used it for hotels as well. The Hilton Garden Inn is one that got a Section 108. Like I said, the La Quinta, this would be a third. The previous two are all current in their repayments. They've created their jobs. They've been good projects for the city. So, you know, we've been pleased with the results of the program.
All right. This is a question for the developers.
Yep.
How many, how many, how many rooms is this hotel going to have?
What we have, I think, 81.
Say it again?
81.
81?
81, yeah, within the existing Massasoit Hotel.
All right. So the existing Massasoit Hotel is going to have 81, and then separately, the theater is going to be redone also.
Yes.
Is there anything right now being done pertaining to the structure to make sure that, you know, like, any repairs now going on?
We've done what we can within the budget we have, but the first use...
Can you speak into the microphone, please, so the folks at home can hear?
We've done what we can within the farmworkers' budget. They've spent about $900,000 in fixing the project and then carrying it, but the first use of the funds from the 108 will be to spend $1,400,000 on the roof, which is the key, because it, and then we, the next thing we plan to do is to seal, replace the windows with historic windows and to clean up the facade, and that'll be, even before we get the first mortgage in place, that'll be, that'll be the first use of funds.
I think, I'm in, I'm in, I'm in favor to this project, and I think that's, this fund and these, these funds that they need to fix the roof are very important, because we, we see in some of these buildings that have been on the market for nine years, what's the problem is that some of them, we put them from RFP, they come back, nobody grabs them, and what ends up happening to some of these buildings is that they deteriorate. Specifically, the Massasoit Place is, is, is one of those buildings that always comes up in pictures when it comes, when it comes to historic sites in Springfield, and I would like to see, I would like to be there that day to, to see the ribbon cutting on this, this building and this, this revitalization project. I just want to tell you guys that this is awesome. This is great. This is big, and with what's going on downtown in the district, I believe this is icing on the cake. Thank you.
Council Williams.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President, and I too rise to support this, as I was a frequent visitor to the Paramount Theater as a kid growing up with Richie Neal and Henry Payne and the folks off the North End, and certainly very proud of the developer and his team, and this is the final piece to downtown. We're coming all the way down from MGM, straight down 41 Elm Street, Riverfront, this is the last piece, and hopefully when they finish this piece, they'll start going out to the neighborhoods and enhancing the neighborhoods. But I'm specifically proud because once I found out in Boston, this will be the first local developer that's really doing business in Springfield, local developer. Here, here be what I say, local developer. In Boston, there's many local developers, and it's almost a prerequisite to be a local developer to develop Boston. They don't call a lot of people from all out of town, all over the country, to come here, trying to make a point. You're the first local developer, and I'm very proud that you continue to invest in the city of Springfield, especially the North End and all over the city. But it's very important to me that we get local people experience the windfall that's going on in Springfield. So, Herbie, and we know you do a good job, the hotel, and I think the state's giving 1.8 in historical, in historic money already, and I think the state's on board to try to help you also. So good luck. Hopefully this will take place, and you make us very, you make us, from the North End, very proud.
Thank you, sir.
Make us very proud. So thank you for your continual investment, your money into the city. Thank you.
Council Edwards.
I rise in support of this project, and I just wanted to assure the taxpayers that this is a program utilized in the past for other hotels around the city. This money is being repaid back. It's a wonderful program that's been demonstrated to be effective in the past, and I have the utmost confidence that this developer will come through, and as my colleague said, this is, this extends the development from Mill Street all the way beyond Union Station, and it is one of the more vital, intricate parts of the redevelopment of our city, and I'm really proud to stand in favor of it, and I would hope my colleagues would be a unanimous vote in support of this.
Council Walsh.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just would like to say that this looks like a very exciting project, and I just want to ask you, to come forward with this at this time, you must have some optimism about what's going on in the city of Springfield. Is there a reason why you're bringing it forward now?
I was here many years ago, and some of you were in this council. It was embarrassing for me as a citizen of the city of Springfield when the governor was signing a petition to put the city on receivership, and that brought something negative, but you, this honorable body, have come back and brought the city to where it is. So I have 100% confidence on this body, on the leadership of the city and our congressman, and we're willing to invest this kind of money, and thank you for your leadership.
Well, thank you for your faith in the city of Springfield, and I do like the picture of the, of the graphic, and it will look, is this exactly what it's going to look like?
We already paid for that. We already paid for that, so we own the, we own the right to that, and that's, that's the way it's going to look. Tap shell.
Very good. I'm happy to support it also.
Council Marcus Williams.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also want to rise in support of this project. I think it's certainly an exciting feature that we'll have in the downtown district, especially in the presence of some larger economic development projects taking place. But I did have just a question, just because, you know, I'm a grant guy, so I mean, I noticed that you did say, you mentioned the loan. Is there a certain amount of time for the payback period?
17,000 seats.
Yeah, it's a 20-year payback for sectional rights.
In that, that interim of time, do you plan on approaching any more private funding for lots?
Lots of money.
That's a lot of money.
They're already, they're already on board, but I need to go to stage one. Today is the first stage, so I can get some of the private investment.
Well, I mean, I certainly support your effort, and, you know, I hope, I mean, just for the sake of, you know, you know, your work and time and invested in this, that you do find some more private funding to go into it that might mitigate some of that, that time that you have to spend looking for the loan, so, thank you.
I should point out to Council Williams a question as well, that New England Farm Workers was a Section 108 recipient in the past for the Plaza project in the North End, and that project has been fully repaid. They created the jobs, and we've received a lot of tax revenue from that as well.
Lot of taxes.
Right, thank you.
Any other questions? Council Walsh.
Mr. President, people are pointing out the faith that Mr. Flores has in the city of Springfield and his great job as a developer, but I would also like to point out his hat. Combat veteran, Vietnam, and you, not only you're serving the city, but you served your country, so thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Seeing none? All right. All those in favor of accepting the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it? We have two items under suspension, and so without objection, we'll take...
Thank you very much. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. You'll be very proud when we finish with this. You'll be cutting the ribbon with me.
Without objection, we'll take item 41, Mr. Clerk.
Item 41 is an order to amend ordinance, Chapter 175, Section 20, regarding crude petroleum storage. This was sponsored by the mayor at the behest of the city clerk's office. What the amendment does is it increases the fees for the application of a, for a permit to store petroleum fluids on a location. As an example, these fees have not been increased in about 20 years. The fee to store between 1 and 8,000 pounds of flammable liquid or flammable substance on a property used to be about $14. This doubles that, and it doubles it for each one of them, so for between 1 and 8,000 pounds of flammable substance, it'll just be $28.
So anyone from the city to present on this?
I'm here to present it from the city clerk's office. Please go through the city clerk's office.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the council? Council Fenton?
Mr. Clerk, is this an ordinance change?
This is an ordinance change, correct.
Any questions or comments from the council? So this would be first step, Mr. Clerk?
That is correct.
All right, all those in favor of first step, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it?